This is a big EKG D through regular methods of communication used for school-wide notifications within 24 hours of either or the earlier of law enforcement or medical personnel confirming a school-connected student overdose, or the school principal having knowledge of a suspected school-connected student overdose. The school principal or principals designated notifies the parent of each student enrolled in the school. Each student, every student, every parent needs to be notified, even if it's suspected. Superintendents have been grappling with this all year a little bit, just especially those of us in small districts where it can be identifiable if there was an incident, then you have to, within 24 hours, notice the whole community. They went back and forth on the suspected piece and had originally, the original way that this was written was confirmed. So it's actually, even if it's suspected, that we have to notify them. That's new. Cell phones. Everybody, I think, saw this. I know the paper published it, and it's been in the news quite a bit. So the policy has changed from the just executive order that allowed some flexibility, where, for instance, here in the high school, we did allow students to use their cell phones at lunchtime. But now that's not, we're not able to do that anymore. The law has changed, and it prohibits cellphone use on school property from the beginning bell to the end of the day bell. So they have to be off and away. The schools will establish age-appropriate rules for the school day storage and consequences. So we started some of that last year at both buildings. Hopefully, we can make this into the handbook before they're out there. But I think we were already starting down that road anyway. So there'll be notification about specific storage. There are exemptions for health needs and IMP accommodations, and that's part of the rule as well. We do have a, it approved tonight. We wanted to get this out to parents as soon as possible. So we have an infographic that explains this update, what it means, and why all of this is coming about. So that's approved. We'd like to get that out pretty soon so that parents can help us and be partners in this because, yeah, the research is getting more and more clear, so.
You're gonna have some writing?
Yeah, probably. But we'll have to, we'll manage the best we can, but again, it's now law. And I like this box that Holly and I were putting together about how is it different than last year? I thought they talked about this last year. Well, before, there was an executive order that gave flexibility. This year, it is the law. House Bill 1961 and Senate Bill 738 were signed on May, in May 2025 as law. So that doesn't give you much flexibility.
And so now the policy is you can't even have your cellphone at all, or it has to be off, but you can have it in your backpack?
That's gonna come out from the schools. So most likely, what I'm seeing across the state, and I have to talk to the principals about how they want this to work, but probably off in a way, backpacks or lockers, I'm sure, would be okay, but that's gonna be up to, you know, what they've seen and they've been collecting some data to.
Unless there's a health plan need, or, I mean, there are exceptions.
So parents are gonna need to, parents who are, like me, who are used to, like, not knowing who's gonna pick up the kid at the end of the day, like, that can't, they can't text their kid and say that.
No, they'll have to call the office, and we'll get a message.
So we can do, have extra receptionists, or, like, that's really where we're going.
Well, I think you can send, you can send a message and know that the child is not going to be able to access it until the very end of the day.
Yeah.
So, that's a good strategy.
And as far as, as far as enforcement, we still have the system that we adopted last year so the teachers don't end up being also the enforcers.
Yes.
That seemed to work. I think that seemed to work.
It seemed to work pretty well.
Good ones, also, after the August.
Great.
The advanced or accelerated math pathways, we've actually been working on that for quite a while as well. But this is going to require automatic enrollment for upper quartile SOL math scores to be placed in that pathway in middle school unless the parent opts out. Annual notifications will be communicated about these options. These just rolled out a couple of weeks ago, and they're the finalist state-approved upper quartile scores in the math, math SOLs. And then this is our middle school math pathways graphic that kind of shows what the options are, and each one has an on and off ramp as well. So if a student, let's say, is on the lower quartile range of grade seven math, and, you know, parents want to push that student, let's see how they do, and then it's, you know, maybe not going so well, there are off ramps in the pathways to be able to ensure the success of each student. Student athlete extreme heat safety. This was a big one. Courtney and I worked on this for a while. This requires six different tiers of decision-making criteria for holding events and practices, including shade and water requirements, temperature metrics. So we've created that in the policy, the draft policy as well. So it'll, but it's gonna be very clear. If the temperature is this between this, then this is what happens, and this is what we need to provide, and so that's there as well.
Yeah, it's a lot. Any questions? Yeah, it's important. I mean, I feel like we're just having more and more, I mean, it's global warming that's happening, and it's really effective, and so it's important to have it. It seems like a lot, but it's necessary.
It was interesting going through the hydration requirements at each of the temperature ranges, and what, you know, how many breaks you have to have, and access to shade at what points in time, the intervals of exercise, and so I learned a lot going through it quite a bit.
Yeah, the shade is really important.
Mm-hmm.
For, yeah.
Any questions about any of that? The bulk of the policies as they are, are there as well for you to review, and then all the policy updates together, all the red lines, and then if you approve, they'll be uploaded to the website this week.
And we have them for a month.
Yeah. And then 4.7 is the division literacy plan. This is just an update. You have seen this before, but we do need to, we have to make some revisions to the interventions, and the state has changed what's been approved, and then what are we using, and we also went through an adoption in math, so, I mean, and reading for bookworms and interventions, so that's all there too. And that had to be updated and uploaded to the state platform, and it's here for your review as well. And this is another one of those sections that then also gets incorporated into our comprehensive plan. Okay, and that concludes my reports.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Grant. Moving on, Headwaters Representative?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so the after-school program enrollment is going live for this fall, this coming Friday, and there'll be six weeks to enroll. Session one begins on August 26, 2025. The Dolly Parton Imagination Library, there were 34 level ones who attended the event at the library on June 28, and they had ice cream and lunch and a story and crabs and a petting zoo. And that's amazing. And then Spark is gonna begin week seven. It's a long, a lot of, a lot of weeks in camp. And it began yesterday, it was week seven, and it is, 68, 70 campers have been coming each day, with two morning workshops and afternoon field trips. And there were 48 camp counselors and CFPs in the daily roster starting in July. So it's a, it's a lot. It's a, it's a big and well-utilized program, and I'm not gonna read every part of that. Headwaters will participate in the farmer's market, and there's gonna be crafts for kids and create, to create and promoting Headwaters Foundation. That'll be this August. I don't know what date, but the farmer's market, or is it the staff farmer's market they're coming to, or is it the Rappahannock Farmer's Market? I'm not exactly sure. But maybe they'll participate in the farmer's, because there's four weeks of farmer's market in the Rappahannock Farmer's. Do you know?
I don't, I don't know. I know that it's happening, but I can't remember.
Okay, okay, so they say, I don't know if it's every week of August, or if it's, I don't know, but in August, so maybe look on their website or just go to the farmer's. Headwaters is organizing a Monster Mash 5K fundraiser. It's gonna be on Saturday, October 4, 2025. You can dress in your Halloween costume and participate in that 5K walk. Sounds fun. And Headwaters will be doing other activities during this event, and this is replacing the harvest festival. That's the update.
Thanks. Do you wanna report on?
So for Mountain Vista, I will say that we did have a meeting. It was the MBGS reorganization meeting. So Mr. Grove is no longer eligible to continue as our executive school board member, and the executive superintendent role goes usually to whoever the new chair is, and the new chair is Pat Baker from Culpeper. And the executive superintendent is actually Jason Van Heukel from Winchester, so we actually kind of broke the chain a little bit. But they're gonna do great, and tomorrow, no, Thursday, we have our Mountain Vista Governor's School Planning Retreat, so that we're going through the strategic plan. And that's an all-day retreat, so I will be there.
Thank you. Six stop one is the VSB delegate and alternate, and historically, Mr. Grove is in our primary area, and I'm pretty sure he's not wanting to do that. So it falls to who's next to be primary and secondary, and we need to make a choice because we have to vote on it. So it's a, so it's part of the, so part of the, basically, after lunch, when they're going into the delegate assembly, so whatever sessions were happening in the afternoon that you might have been in, or stood, you're not gonna.
Like that.
Anyway, I'm willing to be one or the other.
I would be one or the other. I would be the other.
Wanna be the other?
Yeah.
I wanna be the other.
You wanna be the other? All right, so I'm gonna be it, and Rachel will be the other.
Okay. Now, remember, the conference that locks you up.
Really?
Nice.
Yeah.
So I'll be the alternate.
And for many years, that was virtual, but it's not now, I think. I think they're back in the room. All right, we did that, didn't we? Oh, report out on the school board retreat. There was nobody at the school board retreat except for school board people. Sometimes we have a press, or visitor, or, like, there was no one there. We did have a facilitator, Carrie Wilson, who's been our facilitator for years. What in the world did we do for two hours? Well, we reviewed our norms and protocols document, which is how we behave, and, and just to make sure, A, that we're behaving. And the document, you might say, it's four years old, or five, four or five years old.
It gets changed just a little bit.
Yeah, and we tweak it from year to year, depending upon whether we think it's still appropriate or needs to be modified, but really, it's there to protect the school system as a whole. As far as board members go, you know, you may end up in a, with a board that would not want to behave properly, right? And, and so this is a document, its intention is not only to restrain behaviors, to make sure that we're working in unity, but also to protect the school system from hazardous behavior, unbecoming of a board member. So what's in it? We hear each other's opinions, but ultimately, we act as one. That's a topic. There's paragraphs that follow each one that won't bore you, I just want you to know what was in it. The chair speaks as the official voice of the board. We will be mindful of different roles and responsibilities throughout the school system and maintain our focus on policy and governance. Sometimes board members decide they're, you know, they have a rally flag, and they're gonna fight this fight or whatever, but it's to remind us of what our, what our responsibility is of board members. We will be aware that we are perceived as school board members, even though we may have different roles. So, you know, I used to show up as a parent, but I was never treated like one, and I have to remember that to the staff, they can't treat me that way, they won't. So it's to remind us of things like that. We'll be focused on work as a board and not interfere with day-to-day operations of the school. That's our job. We will maintain open communications with one another, administration, the community at large. And then other things go on that are more detailed, that have to do with how we run a meeting, how we interact during that meeting with one another, how we don't interact with the public, because we're here to hear the public, not to have a town meeting. So things like that are discussed. And then how we act in social media, these types of topics, behavioral topics. And of course, we also have this really fun section called violations, which everybody wants to know, what do you gotta do if you have a board member that doesn't? So just so you're aware, there's a section where we discuss how we're gonna handle it when we have, you know, a renegade. Anyway, that was, that's how it ended. And after we went through that, we spent a little time talking about how to better communicate to the community from, from the school's perspective, and ideas around better communication, because this last budget cycle just wore us all out, and we heard things that were not true, and, you know, you're on your heels trying to dispel falsehoods publicly, because once it's out there, people start consuming it as if it were true, whether it's true or not. And so we talked about how to better communicate, or things we were gonna try to change this year. I guess that was about it. Am I gonna add to that?
Yeah, I guess just relevant to that, I just, I did notice that from our last supervisor's meeting, there was already talk about the school, but it for next year. So, so it's gonna be, it's an early start to our, to our meeting to be more present.
And one of the things we talked about was being more, more visible, more present at other government meetings in the county.
Yeah, and we don't have, we didn't come up with a specific strategy, we just generalities. Might be something. As we get into it, I think that's a good idea, is just strategize, you know, where you want to be present, albeit just about every meeting that they have. But, and definitely talking points and getting, getting out early on some of the issues we heard. We did hear quite, and some legitimate, legitimate concerns that we now know we need to really spend more time educating the public about, you know, so, and that's perfectly fine. It was a good exercise, and we actually did connect with quite a few people who really just wanted to understand, and even some that were pretty vocal about what they thought was true, and now coming around to, okay, well, maybe I didn't quite understand what you were saying, and, and being supportive in that, or at least wanting to help, because it's, I think what was, what definitely came out of it is we do have a challenge across the whole county coming up with revenue enough to support the need, you know, and that's just something we're gonna have to grapple with. Yeah, I think it would be helpful for us to help the school communicate better. We, I mean, I honestly don't read the board supervisors' agendas before meetings, I don't necessarily know when the meetings are happening, but if we could get, we'd be notified of, like, when there's a meeting with an agenda item that would be beneficial for a school board member to attend, that would be helpful. I know that you go to all the meetings, but maybe we could have, we knew that, you know, just let us, let us all know.
Yeah, we're trying to get, all we're trying to do is get ahead of, you know, the next surprise.
I think a big part of it is educate.
Yeah, we're trying to educate.
Yeah, so that they understand what the interests are. I think a lot of people just don't get that this is a moving, living organism, and you have to be able to flex. And we can budget as best we can, and we can try to outline what we're gonna be spending, and, but things change, you know, mid-week, mid-year, mid-month, and we have to be able to be flexible, be able to address those things. And we're using our historical data as best we can and preparing for that, so.
Right. And that took about two hours. And it was a very interesting time. It's a good time to, we do it once a year, and good use of, good use of time. The next thing on the agenda is this 6.3, so VSB A Advocate of Educational Work. So the way this, this process goes, we have to make a submission, it has to be voted on by the board unanimously, and so Shannon presented the idea of doing a write-up for Mr. Grove, who is leaving us in December as a board member, and, and so Shannon and I jointly wrote this document, which we sent out to everyone, which is on Board Docs, which is an extensive, you know, it's Larry's life on paper. It's on two and a half pages, summed the guy up in two and a half pages, so. Anyway, it speaks to his life's legacy in public education. And, and, and we decided to vote on it tonight in his absence, so it would be unanimous. Because he'll have to vote absent, I guess. So the goal would be, this is presented, I believe, at the VSB conference, so we have to find a way of getting him there, because I think he's thinking he's not a good use of, you know, you told us, yeah, we told him he needed to be there. He said it was not a good use of the $200 entry fees, probably right there. He needs to be there for this, so, because I think he'll win. Anyway, I'm not gonna bore you with all of this, but this is a man who has played many different roles throughout his life, and he's definitely a distinguished leader whom I think will win. So, anyway, we'll vote on this, and hopefully it's unanimous, and I'll submit the pack, you have to submit the package online, so do that as soon as, as soon as it passes. Any other comments? Yay, Larry. All right, to open the floor to public comments, who would like to address the board this evening? Anybody? July the 15th, 2025. Ms. Yobin.
I sit still for a long, I suppose.
Oh, no. I was jealous.
Soft chair this week.
I say I was jealous and soft chair.
Good chair.
Anya and P. Mountain District, if that makes any difference. So I actually had several things I wanted to bring up, but first of all, I am just laboring under Miss Havering. I thought, based on some comments from the last board meeting, that one of the topics at this meeting was gonna be information about what the behavioral mental health kind of programs were. So I guess I misunderstood that. I thought that was what was gonna be one of the subjects. But related to that, as, you know, from lots of different places, because of the unfortunate incident, there's been a lot of discussion about gun safety. And there might be a lot of ways to address that. One is just, you know, just tell kids, don't mess with guns. Other things you could do would be, part of back-to-school night, have some stuff on gun safety, really publicizing the availability of trigger locks, the fact that they're free, how to use them, potentially using some of the sort of, whatever you call it, those free little, not free time, but those targeted sessions, particularly in the high school in the morning, to do a little more education. And I would say, and this is just my impression, in our environment, it's not, you're not gonna tell people you don't have guns. It's just, it's part of the culture, but, but everybody needs to understand safety with them, and safety is both a mental thing and some basic knowledge and access to things like the trigger locks and whatever. So I, I think it would be, it would be good to address that. In my mind, that's sort of part of the whole health thing. A totally different subject. I'm sure that most of you probably, if you have looked at the video of the last board supervisor's meeting, and near the end of the meeting, there was a fair amount of discussion about, as you have already kind of intimated here, getting, kind of getting ahead on the budget planning and the communication on the budget planning and so forth. Some different kinds of attitudes and whatever, but one of the things that was suggested near the end of the meeting, or near the end of that part of the discussion, was not a formal resolution, but a suggestion, and I honestly don't remember who made it, that school board, board of supervisors' members should start meeting regularly, one-on-one with their counterparts on the school board. And so I, to me, that sounds like a good idea. But what I actually wondered was whether anybody from the board of supervisors had actually contacted any of you, just, uh, kind of one-on-one, to see, to see if that was actually happening. So those are just a couple of things that, totally unrelated, but I think they're things, particularly to getting ahead on the education and communications, are important. I also think maybe something to consider, and I don't have any idea what the participation would be, but figuring out a way to offer in some environment, kind of how your school board works, how your budget works, how it gets built to the public. I don't know if it'd work through RFC or whatever, how many, might have three people who would come, but the more people who actually understand the process, the sorts of things you guys are just talking about. Or maybe even do a regular little column in the paper or something about a little piece of the process, and, you know, who to follow up with on that particular piece and what the parameters are for that. I just would hate to repeat the kind of discussion we had this past spring, and I think from some of the comments in the board supervisor's meeting, it's, at least in some cases, not going to be a very welcoming environment. So again, you can make your own judgments if you, if you look at the video, but I think having those one-on-one discussions and the maximum amount of education to the public by whatever means it is about the process, but having to break it down into little pieces would be, would be very helpful.
Thanks. Very good. Next, yes.
Betsy E. Wakefield. I just, I wanna say that tonight's very brief discussion about the retreat, the board retreat, was so helpful, and that to hear you all have more than just a report out, but a conversation about a discussion and what the issues, I mean, you didn't really get into the issues, and I know that this is, you know, you, you have to walk a tightrope in terms of how much you can convey in a public meeting, particularly because of the climate, but it is, it is so important for the general public to understand that you all have opinions and that you acknowledge that what happened with the budget and the need to kind of not just get out in front, but to educate all of us, because I know that the amount of time and energy and, you know, heart that you guys put into this process was, it costs a lot in terms of your, your personal standing, your, your sense of belonging to this community. So I just encourage and support those, the kind of conversation that you started to have tonight, and hope that going forward in the next, the next year, that there can be more of those kinds of interactions when you feel that, that it's okay and you're not gonna be, you know, somebody isn't gonna come at you from left field. So thank you for starting that tonight.
Thanks.
Hi, how are you guys? I'm Steph Ritter in the Wakefield District, and I've been just racking my brain about how to prevent the whole budget debacle again, and one of the things that I was thinking was, you know, if you go to Board Docs, it's really hard to find school board meetings. I mean, it's, you know, they have, if you check, you know, click on meeting, it doesn't come up. You have to keep searching, it doesn't come up, you know, what comes up is Board Supervisor's Planning Commission, and I would just, maybe if they could just get the And I would just, maybe if they could just get the algorithm so that school board comes up really clearly, people might actually come. Then my other idea is that when, if you have a sense of a problem brewing, maybe those of us in the community could go out and do a little education. For instance, recently, I've been hearing about a massive, I guess, exodus of teachers from the high school because they're not happy. And that, if I'm hearing that, that's going around and there's, I didn't, there's got to be a way of addressing, I'm guessing Kier Whitsen's hearing it. There's got to be a way of addressing it, maybe with a newspaper article that touts, you know, all the wonderful, I know we do this regularly, but our, every year, but who's coming in and how, you know, what their credentials are and so on. It's sort of that, not just half a page, make a whole page or something that will draw attention to the fact that, you know, this is a, this is a really good school. And you, all the disparaging comments really take a toll. Thank you.
Anyone else? I really appreciate sharing things with us. It's really helpful. Anyone else? All right. We're about to roll through some action items. Buckle up. Is there a motion to approve the order management plan that's presented this evening? Mr. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. McCool, is there any discussion?
That's good to do.
On paper, aye? Aye, opposed, no. This order, is there a motion to approve the technology plan 25, 26? Big motion, Ms. McCool, is there a second? Second, Ms. Bynum. Any discussion? Good plan. Awesome job. Aren't we all so afraid of A I? We should. That's why.
Because it's so scary. That's why. Where it's worth it, maybe.
And how do we dispel fear? All in favor, aye? Opposed, no? And so ordered. Motion to approve the out-of-county tuition rate? Motion, Ms. Stevens, is there a second? Second, Ms. McCool, any discussion?
We were looking to talking about having a minimum payment.
Minimum payment. And I think, and we just need to get that out there on the agenda in October, November, before we get too far on the curve. All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? This order, is there a motion to approve the annual resolutions that's presented this evening? Motion, Ms. Bynum, is there a second? Second, Ms. McCool, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed, no? And so ordered. Is there a motion to adopt the V S B A policy updates?
Salute.
Motion, Ms. McCool, is there a second? Second, Mr. Rubin. Any discussion?
A lot of.
That's a lot.
We're putting together things based on statute.
So, you know, we pay V S B A 1,700 a year for that advice.
2,100.
Oh, 2,100, yeah. So I'm glad to see them doing some work, actually. But, you know, we're not paying a lawyer anyway.
If you're matching one, if you had a lawyer, it would be a lot.
475 an hour.
Yeah, it was a lot. Did Larry do the, did he have a motion on the floor? I think we did.
Yeah, he did discussion.
All right. All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, is there a motion to have V S B A delegate mills and alternate, Ms. Bynum? Is there a motion? That way, motion, Ms. Rubin, is there a second?
Second.
Of course, they voted. I remember, I used to be a delegate. I remember being there, like back in the, like 2001. And they gave us all the fly swatters at the table. Everybody had a fly swatter. And that's how we voted. Like I was at an auction or something.
It's like an auction. Do you have to keep the fly swatter?
I got to keep it. I do not sell that for possible.
Do you have a toaster?
I wanted a toaster. All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, the Larry Ward, V S B A Advocate of Educational Award. I'm going to do a roll call to make sure we get this down. All right, everyone, so we have a motion and we have a second.
Second.
Ms. McCool, and we're going to roll call.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. What's that, Mr. Grove? Absent? It's unanimous.
See what happens.
How I can submit it. All right. Is there a motion to adopt the updated boards' norms and protocols? Motion, Ms. McCool, is there a second? Second, Mr. Rubin. All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. And a motion to adopt the Division Literacy Plan that's presented this evening. After motion, Ms. Rubin, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Bynum, is there any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, we did it. Is there any new business?
It was my understanding that it would be next month that we would have a mental health update, so that's on the line for next month. And I, I am, I also spoke with Dr. Grimsley yesterday about the possibility of having firearms, safety, education for families and for, you know, and for students who are the appropriate age for that. Because I feel that I've heard, you know, the tragedy that happened at the beginning of the summer, being just a one, one young person with a gun, feels like there could have been some education that could have prevented that or prevented similar kind of occurrence.
And I was contacted by my peer supervisor. And it probably is good for us all to figure out, to create a strategy in our own districts of how to communicate or have a forum of some kind, as far as communicating, whether it's just one-on-one or two-on-two, which doesn't require, and doesn't require a meeting, right? And a formal meeting. And then the idea of hot topics too. We did have a discussion at the retreat about how, how can we handle hot topics to get information out quickly? We did talk about that, to say, we need to be better about that. How are we going to do it? And there were a lot of ideas about that. So we just need to figure out where, what we're going to actually execute in that realm. And I think you had some ideas, you had a podcast idea, you had a webpage idea, but it needs to be easily accessed, I think is a good point. Easily accessed would mean, you should have to move it somewhere where it's more visible to people, easier to navigate.
And pretty soon, on that note, Holly created a really great postcard size that hopefully will, you'll see very soon distributed throughout the community with a Q R code that will connect people instantly to the things that are going on in the schools at any given time. And that landing page will be updated regularly, so we're hoping to distribute that very soon.
So hot topics could be there.
Exactly, yes.
That's a really good idea.
Upcoming events, our happenings and highlights page, and that'll be a way that we can hopefully communicate on some things.
Even the kids could hit it, but not bell to bell. Got it. Is there any other new business? Other future agenda items? Our next board meeting is August 12th, I think. Is that correct? Somebody check that for me. Back in the same room, assume? Is it?
It says 13 and here, but I didn't.
But I think it is the 12th.
Yeah, we'll double check that and fix that.
Oh, does it say that one?
It's correct on the calendar that's posted, just not on the comments and that. It is on the 12th, 6:30.
Same place, same time?
Same place, same time. And now we have a motion to go into closed session.
I move that the board convene in closed session for the following purpose, discuss and consider the appointment of staff for professional classified coaching positions and the resignation of professional and classified positions pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3, section 118.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Protect Ms. Rubin, all in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? So we're going to move into another room. We're going to be back in 20 to 30 minutes. You want to hang out? And we should be able to share also.
It's 13.
15, okay. And we should be able to share, you know, exciting things that were, that people were hired and G D L step and maybe even the remaining vacancies status. So if you want to hang out. If you don't, you can read about it. Funny.